Good evening, everyone. I just want to apologize. We had a special study session earlier. And just want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting, City Council, on Monday, March 12, 2018. And for those of you wishing to address the City Council of any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communication, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Now, let's, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gingona? Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
So this evening, we have a special commendation for Justin Yamamura. And like for him to come up too. So we have a special young man here, Justin Yamamura. Justin Yamamura. And he actually won the Prudential Spirit of the Community Award. And I'd like to read to the audience and for those of you watching, whereas Justin Yamamura of Daly City was named one of the top youth volunteers in California for 2018 and in the 23rd Annual Prudential Spirit of America Awards. With this extraordinary honor, more than 20,000, 29,000 youth across the country participated in this year's program. And Justin, as a senior at St. Ignatius College Preparatory, is the founder of Youth Policy Initiative, a nonprofit that has hosted two-week-long civics and leadership summer camps for middle school students from diverse backgrounds. Justin's, whereas Justin's camps have reached over 55 7th and 8th graders with opportunities to learn about politics and advocacy and are able to travel to downtown San Francisco to hear directly from city officials and activists. Whereas students like Justin represent the best of America's youth and are role models to their peers and their communities. Now therefore, I, Justin Manalo, the Mayor of City of Daly City, on behalf of our City Council, recognize you, Justin Yamamura, for your outstanding dedication and compassion to bring meaningful, meaningful change to this community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's really with young people like you that are interested in really giving back to our community that we have hope for our future. Would you like to say some words?
Thank you very much for this honor to the City Council. I really appreciate it. And it's just been an honor to serve the community and also just to watch you guys because I've always been really passionate about politics and it's just great to help other kids and also myself to learn more about it. So thank you very much for this award.
Thank you. This month is also National Nutrition Month. And this evening, we have a representative from Seton. We have Paul, Pauline Wong Martinez that will be here.
Thank you for joining us, Mrs. Seton.
Thank you for having your proclamation.
So, health in Daly City is very important. So proclaiming National Nutrition Month is so important. The proclamation states, whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained and whereas the type, the quality and the amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness. And whereas there is a need for continuing nutritional education and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Now therefore, I, Justin Manalo, Mayor, and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim the month of March, National Nutrition Month. And so we encourage every single person and community member to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
So on behalf of Crystal Young, our Director of Nutrition and Food Services, and our staff at Sein Medical Center, thank you Mayor Manalo, Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, and our esteemed City Council members and for proclaiming March National Nutrition Month. So National Nutrition Month is a nutrition, education, information campaign, and is created annually by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. This year's campaign is called Go Further with Food, and it focuses attention on the importance of maximizing informed food choices to make sure that we're eating balanced nutritious food from across all the food groups, not just carbs, developing sound eating habits by being mindful of portion sizes, engaging in physical activities that you enjoy and being active most days of the week, and reducing food loss and waste by planning and preparing meals and snacks in advance. So whether it's starting off the day right with a healthy breakfast, choosing the right snacks, or engaging in fun physical activities, your food and activity choices can really make a real difference. So go ahead and consult with a registered dietitian, nutritionist for personalized advice if you need to, to meet, help meet your lifestyle preferences and health-related needs. Happy National Nutrition Month. And I just wanted to say, you all know Dr. Ryan from our hospital, right? We'll be honoring him for 40 years of medical service. And he has been, you know, in our community, you know, for these 40 years, really talking about nutrition and talking about how to prevent heart disease, which is the number one, you know, reason for deaths in our, you know, greater community. And on April 6, we'll be honoring him at Sipping with Sein, and we'll be starting a cardiovascular fund for equipment and training in his honor. So it's Friday, April 6, at the Lake Merced Club. We're bringing back, you know, a big tradition, and we invite the community to go ahead and find out, come to our website and get information. You just Google Sein Medical Center and find the information. Okay? And thank you very much for the proclamation. We will display it with a lot of pride. Thank you.
Very much, Pauline. So moving on with approval of the minutes, I do have one change on the minutes on page four. And I can give this to the city clerk, so it's easy for you. It's basically changing one area where it says honoring Filipina Silver Star Lieutenant. The lieutenant wasn't added in there. And with renaming of American Legion Post 510. So that was just a change.
With that change, I make a motion to approve the minute.
Second.
So there was a...
A motion, second.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, moving on...
Reading the agenda, aye.
Thank you. And then moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. At this point, do we have any public appearances and oral communications?
Oh, there.
Thank you very much. May we have Ms. Lily Louie, please?
Oh, I know who she's talking about. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. My neighbors on Oakmont Drive and I would like to express our thanks and appreciation to Daly City Water and Engineering Departments, especially their dedicated and professional staff. Both water and engineering were very responsive and efficient, ensuring our Daly City residents are taken care of by them. After my last City Council public comment, Water Department came out the following day, on Tuesday, to look into my issue. My contractor had problems drilling a large hole through a half-inch steel plate for our required new concrete reinforced water meter box. This was necessary to complete our paver project to replace existing front lawn based on approved plans submitted. Unbelievable, our steel plates were drilled that same day. Called Engineering Department for final inspection, and Inspector came over on Wednesday and approved my project. Such efficiency. I would like to thank our Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, and all our public employees for all they do to improve Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glad you got your drive away.
Ms. Louie, I'd like to make a comment. I hate to talk to your back.
I'm sorry.
I hate to talk to your back.
I'm sorry, I'm deaf in this ear.
I'd hate to talk to your back as you were walking away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I wanted to address you personally. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, to City Council last month. I know the dilemma you were going through in trying to get those holes drilled.
Yes.
And then working with our Public Works, and you have complied and worked with the system to get your paving project done, which I'd say is very beautiful, and they should use your paver project as a model to show everyone else.
When did you see it?
Huh?
Oh.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know where you live. And, and thank you for following up also and letting us know about staff and Public Works. And if I'm not mistaken, if anyone else has a paving project that they're going through and they need those holes drilled, where would they go?
They're gonna call the Water Department.
And Water Department...
And they come out right away.
They came out right away. So I wanted to say thank you very much, Ms. Louie.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you all.
Okay. May we have Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, I have a call, Council Members. I'd just like to say, I liked the idea that you guys brought up the public safety with our schools, and I appreciate that. And also included in that, if you're gonna have a community meeting, I heard from the teachers that evening when I got home from school, I mean, got home from the meetings, and please include our AFT and anyone else involved, because they are the actually the ones that are in the lockdowns, and they were explaining to me what they were doing in the classrooms and during the drills. So they said if you're having a meeting or any kind of forum, or if it's a community meeting, and it would be probably great to even have the staff here included, because it's not just safety in our schools, it's safety in our communities, any workplaces. Now, more than ever, we need to come together, and I appreciate that the Council reached out to other agencies in the districts and tried to bring us all together, because we're all in this together for safety for all and to have our quality of life extended. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can just address her comment. So, so for the community to know, we have scheduled meetings with the Jefferson Elementary School Board, as well as the Union High School, and of paramount concern, it's gonna be discussed at the meetings, are the issue of school safety. The chief will be attending, and I think it's actually a good idea that maybe some of the teachers be invited as well. So thank you, Ms. Di Giovanni, for bringing that up. I'm having my meeting with Ms. Christensen, I think it's on the 23rd of March. I'm not sure when the Jefferson Union High School's meeting, but I know that you're gonna have that on your agenda as well.
Yeah, we've requested for the committee to meet on that, and I think Ms. Martel's working on some...
We're trying to find a way for the high school district representative.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so moving on to any appointments on boards, commissions? Seeing none, moving on to reports, Council Committee. On the agenda, it talks about the Affordable Housing Council Committee Emergency Meeting. There was a meeting on the acquisition of 16 units for low-income households on East Mulkey. To let the public know, it was a meeting about, talking about, you know, supporting the acquisition of that, and that will actually be further down the line, and we'll be talking further in the Daly City Finance Agency Meeting after this regular meeting. But I just wanted to let the public know that we understand the need for affordable housing solutions and that we need a comprehensive way of looking at things. And so when this came to the committee with Council Member Sylvester and I, this is part of that comprehensive strategy, where we can build more affordable units, but we also must take into consideration how we're able to preserve and have these units restricted and not go to the market, and that's what, you know, has happened to many community members. And so this is just one way that we would be able to support residents remaining, to remain in Daly City. And so, you have a comment, Council Member?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think it was a very productive meeting. Thank you so much for bringing this and, and bringing this to our attention. I got something hot off the press. I don't know if you got it.
I did, I did, and that's why I mentioned we'll talk about it at the Daly City Finance Agency.
Okay, got it.
Meeting.
Gotcha.
Around, and it was just a report back on basically what we talked about in our meeting, but I appreciate that. Hot off the press. And so, yes. Also, is there any other Council Committee reports at this moment?
Council...
No? Okay. So moving on to City Council. So a report on Wednesday, I just wanted to let the committee know, February 28. I had a informational meeting with Lake Merced Golf Club with some of my colleagues who are proud to announce the launch of, that there is a name now to the Ladies Professional Golf Association. It's gonna be called MediHill, Ladies Professional Golf Association Tournament. And so on April 23, I think, to Sunday, April 29. They are looking for volunteers, and you can go on their website. So many of you have remembered it was called the Swinging Skirts in the past, but it will be called MediHill Champ Tournament, here, right here at our Lake Merced Golf Club course. And so for those of you that want to volunteer or even watch, it's actually at a very nominal price. They want a lot of community members around the Bay Area to participate, and you could actually go on their website, which is MediHill, M-E-D-I-H-E-A-L-Champ, C-H-A-M-P, dot com. And then something exciting in our Daly City. On Thursday, February 29, I got to join a meeting with the Nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California, basically learning more about the legislative updates with bills regarding housing statewide. And on Thursday, March 1, there were many of you out that came to participate, and I'd like to thank every one of you, and most especially the staff, that put on such a wonderful evening honoring our women. The theme was Nevertheless, She persisted, honoring women who fought or who continue to fight all forms of discrimination against women. It was such a delight to see the community present from all age ranges. It was extremely beautiful. I want to say thank you to Vice Mayor Buena Ventura and Council Member Sylvester and our supervisor, David Canepa, for their support and presence that evening. On Friday, March 2, I had the opportunity to speak up policy in a middle school to 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, and that was extremely a delight. It's actually one of the favorite things I like to do when I get to speak to the younger generation. I shared with them that we have a master plan overlooking, a master plan to look at all our parks, and they were extremely excited to hear that their voice mattered, and if they wanted to participate, to email me. I hope to see some emails in my inbox. On Saturday, March 3, it was also very amazing to see all our nonprofit service providers, most especially our park and recreation staff, sharing what we do and also providing activities at ceremony. How many of you were out there? It was amazing to see the resources at the fair. That was incredible, and this is really indicative of what communities can do when they work together. On Tuesday, March 6, I met with the Daly City Partnership and with Samatyo Get Healthy Staff to look at potential opportunities to support small businesses, the community school model, and create more leadership opportunities for parent leadership, as well as a potential community mural project to work together in high-need potential areas in Daly City. It's in its initial stages, but it's really around how do we partner with nonprofits, small businesses, schools, to create a more cohesive community? On last Thursday, March 8, I attended my very first City-County Association of Governments meeting, and where they had an updated presentation from Commute.org, and also the carpool program. And I know Council Member Sylvester has mentioned this, but if you haven't heard, there is a carpool program called Scoop. You get $2 if you carpool ride with someone, and the driver also gets $2 in one direction. This is really to incentivize carpool and less congestion on the road. And on Friday, I was able to attend SAMCIDA to learn about the different innovative companies in Samatyo County. I think it's so important for us to also try to build private-public partnerships, and I attended to hear the amazing innovative companies that were there. I hope, hopefully, one day, we can find linkages and partnerships in Daly City in the near future. On Saturday, I want to say thank you to our Sustainability Coordinator, Stephen Stolt, and the Boys and Girls Club in the Bay Shore Community Center for planting trees. I know that Planning Commissioner Pam Di Giovanni was present to help to plant those trees. It was just amazing to see these young kids. You know, it wasn't bright and sunny that day. It was a little rainy, but they were out there really making sure they were able to complete their task. Last Saturday, I also was able to attend Skyline College, which hosted Rock the School Bells. It was actually a hip-hop conference that provided students a place of expression through art and music, in which Vice Chair Planning Commissioner Rod Daos Magwal was there to support his students. That is the rest of my report, and now I extend it to my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not gonna have a long one. I didn't, I guess I didn't prepare and write them all down, but to coincide with the mayor, I too was at the ceremony fair, and if you haven't been to the fair, you need to go. The free health screening checks, blood pressure, and with fire and police giving out these stickers to the kids. I remember I used to do that as a police officer, and they really loved that. So stay aware of our ceremony fair. I had an opportunity to attend one, I believe, Ms. Martel, of four meetings that we're going to have, and that's on cannabis. Apparently, our city manager and in agreement with the council is reaching out to the community. We want your input. So please, check our website for the upcoming dates in your area. I attended actually the first meeting, and not only did we get folks from the community, but also possible business persons who had some very good questions. We talked about equity. How do we ensure equity? We talked about, is it just gonna be Daly City folks who's going to open up the business? But there's one thing I learned, and that is, for the council to decide, the sole source of deciding whether we are going to allow it here in Daly City is not based on money alone. Not based on money alone. So please keep that in mind. We want what's best for the community, and at the same time, complying with what the voters had voted for. That's all I have at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council Member Glenn Sylvester, and thank you for reminding us about the community meetings. I think the next one is tomorrow. So for those of you that have not attended, our second one is tomorrow, and it'll be at Geller, Geller...
The Geller Community Center.
Community Center at 6...
6:00 PM, 6 to 8 o'clock.
So if you want to provide input, please come out tomorrow. Any other...
Yeah, I just have a question. I want to know, when is our task force meeting for rooming houses and short-term rentals? Is that coming along?
Funny you should mention that, Council Member, because we have a staff meeting scheduled tomorrow to lay out all the details that we...
So it's moving forward?
So it is moving forward, and I hope to get invitations out to the task force members and schedule our first meeting fairly soon. As soon as we have those dates, we will provide it to the council.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And with the task force, as the last time we created a task force, if there is people that would like to involve, we can forward their names to you, Ms. Martel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next agenda, or is there any more reports? Okay, so seeing, any staff reports, Ms. Martel?
None this evening.
Okay. And so at this moment, we would like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following. Vanessa Guillory, a Daly City community member, and it was a request from Christine Fuller. Emelda Largo, Daly City community member, Marcel Balmeo's sister. And then I leave this to you, Council Member Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to adjourn also this meeting for two San Francisco police officers that I know. You know, I read a study quite a few years ago, and they say that police officers, after they retire, they live for about five or six years. And I think it's been six years for me, so I'm probably getting close. Just kidding. But anyway, it's because of all the stress that's placed on the lives, but at the same time, when you're in the profession, you enjoy it. Well, anyway, Kenneth Mathis and Pauline left earlier. Did you notice when she gave her a little speech and she was talking about diet and your habits? And she looked at me and she said, especially the carbs. Well, I remember Officer Kenny Mathis, when I was stuck inside on the book, he used to bring me donuts. And I'm gonna miss him, and he's a guy that you don't forget. Robert Redd is another person who I had the opportunity to work with, and he used to play for the Denver Broncos. And unfortunately, he's gone and left us, so those two San Francisco police officers, I'm... So those two San Francisco police officers, I pay memorial tribute to them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Also Fred Rui Gomez, father of James Rui Gomez, head of the San Mateo Building Trades. Also employees and/or their immediate family members. Daly City firefighter Ronnie Gu's father, mother? Julia Guadalupe Gu. And then also Denise Bray, Public Works Maintenance Supervisor's sister, Deborah J. Minton. Let's all take a moment of silence, please.